Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please? Ladies and gentlemen, our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Jean Henserling, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together tonight to conduct the affairs of this city on behalf of its citizens. May we act impartially and independently for the good of the whole city. May we be professional in our dealings as a council. Father God, we thank you for your many blessings upon this city and its citizens. We ask that you continue to guide us and guard us in the days to come. Be with us tonight as we leave this place, that we journey to our household safely, Father God. And just be with us at this time. I pray these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is a proclamation for National Library Week. And the Chair of the Library Board is here this evening, Rexanne Grove, and I'd like to ask her to meet me at the podium, please.
And I'm also joined by our Library Director, Mr. Rodney Bland. Our nation's libraries and librarians play a vital role in connecting millions of people with the resources they need to live, learn, and work in the 21st century. Libraries are places of opportunity. Libraries are part of the American dream. They are a place for education and self-help. And because they offer free access to all, they bring opportunity to all. Libraries bring you the world. Libraries are unique, in person, online. Where else can you have access to nearly anything on the web or print, as well as personal service and assistance in finding it? Awareness and support must be increased for libraries by increasing the visibility of libraries in a positive context and by communicating clearly and strongly why libraries are both unique and valuable. Libraries and library supporters across America and beyond are celebrating National Library Week with the campaign for America's Libraries at Your Library. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Nancy Watkins, Mayor of the City of Haltem City, Texas, proclaim April 1 through 7, 2001, as National Library Week. I encourage all residents to use our library for the purpose of improving their lives. Come and see what's new at our library. Congratulations. Thank you, Rexanne.
I just want to say thank you to the council for your support. And I want to invite everyone to come to the library and enjoy it. And then I want to do one other little thing this evening. We -- I look at my notes here. This evening, we are here to honor someone who has been the guiding force in giving us the library that we can enjoy this next week, in Library Week. And Rodney, I want you to come up here. Rodney Bland. Our Library Services Director has done so much for our library, it's impossible to enumerate. We all know how we have developed such a wonderful working partnership with the council and the administration. And the result is that we have increased funding for the library, we have renovated the library, we have gotten computers, and, you know, it is just a totally new library. And it's all because of fraud. And so I would like to present this plaque to Rodney L. Bland, Library Services Director, in appreciation for your guidance and your vision. Haltem City Library Board, March the 26th, 2001.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a number of the Library Board and personnel here. Would all of you stand up for just a minute so we can recognize you? Thank you for being here this evening. Agenda item number two is proclamation for Fair Housing Awareness Month. And I will just simply read this into the record. The City of Haltem City, Texas, has an established and ongoing commitment to the principles of fair housing and equal opportunity for every resident of the city. The City of Haltem City recognizes that access to decent, safe, and sanitary housing should be available to all residents. The lack of information, awareness, and education related to fair housing can preclude us from achieving this goal. Fair Housing Awareness Month is recognized as the month of April 2001 and urge all residents to support all activities which promote and encourage fair housing and equal opportunity in the sale or rental of housing properties within this city. Our next agenda item is our consent agenda, and it consists of items number four through 17, with the exception of Agenda Item 9, which has been removed for separate vote. Councilmember Avery?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda with the removal of Agenda Item Number 9.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
For a second?
I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Henserling, do you have discussion?
I just want to make mention I'll be voting for the consent agenda but voting against Items Number 7 and 8.
Please register your vote, gentlemen. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 9, this is the second reading for livestock, amending the number of livestock that can be kept on property. And I do have a speaker's card, Mr. Jimmy Rust. Would you come forward, please, sir? Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, ma'am. Jimmy Rust, I live at 4805 Lorraine.
And let us hear your concern, Mr. Rust.
All right. I've been a citizen of Haltem City all my life. I'm also a member of the American Banham Association, the APA, the American Poultry Association, the APA, and other different organizations throughout the United States and Canada in raising show poultry, show banhams. I guess kind of to start with, I also have won two of the highest awards that can be given in the United States by winning grand champions on shows anywhere from California to New York City, all over that we've won. All those birds have been raised in Haltem City. We raise them in a house, not out in a yard. We raise them in a building, I call that a building. I just think that the ordinance that we're looking at right now is not feasible at all for anyone that shows poultry or that wants to raise them as a hobby or anything like that. It's unfair, it's unrealistic to think that one rooster to 20 hens could do anything for you. I won the Fort Worth Stock Show. At that show, I showed 14 different males. To show 14 males, I probably would need 20 or so to pick from. And also, I do live on a lot that's big enough to handle those. And a lot of people that are with me, representing the associations, also have -- we have the lots that are big enough according to the ordinance, according to where we bought at that time to raise poultry. I guess I would ask, what is the problem? What have they caused people in our organizations to show all over the United States, to spend that kind of money to send those birds? They're clean, the place is clean. Texas A&amp;M comes out every year and tests our birds. We cannot show a bird that's not been tested through Texas A&amp;M. I guess I don't see where there's a problem. And I guess that would be a question I would ask, is what has changed to change the ordinance?
I suspect with you raising showhens or banhams
Banhams.
That your facilities are a little different than a person raising, say, just ordinary chickens or ducks or livestock. What kind of facilities do you have?
Well, most of our people are here, we have good pens. We build our pens, we keep them up every year. We keep them clean, they're part of our property, we want them to be that way. We work on them every weekend to keep them clean. Many of the showbirds cannot be in the sun. So buildings like you can build, or I guess a lot of people call them storage buildings, we will go in, we will take a building, a 12 by 20, put the door on it, put a couple of windows in it, and most of the birds are raised in those environments because they can't, if you get sun on them, you can't show them, that fades the birds, different things like that. So that's what I would say.
Right.
No, you wouldn't go to a house and see a bunch of them running loose in a front yard, backyard, or anything like that. No, ma'am.
Right. And I didn't think so.
Right.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Right.
Mr. Councilmember Patino is the council member that originally put this on the agenda last time?
Yes, ma'am.
And he has his light on, so I'm going to call on him.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. First of all, can you tell me your name again?
Rust, R-U-S-T, Jimmy Rust.
I certainly want to compliment you on all the achievements, all the awards that you have won. It was brought to my attention by a concerned citizen, and mainly was about the nuisance that the rooster were creating by doing a lot of crowing. And I know that all the cities like Fort Worth had a problem with that. And in reference to one rooster for 20 hens, that was just kind of something that came to mind. It wasn't anything that was already established. However, I did do a little research, and I got in touch with Murray McMurray Hatchery out of Iowa.
Mm-hmm.
And what they recommend is the ratio of one rooster per 10 to 12 hens. So if it's established at 20 hens, then I think that two roosters would be adequate. However, for somebody that's raising for chow, I imagine something can be arranged if more roosters are needed. I mean, on our first reading, we didn't have nobody here to kind of
Right, I understand, sir.
...what they wanted.
Understand.
And just kind of doing something in the blind.
Right.
Also, I would be willing to support also that in addition to those 20 productive hens, what I call productive landhens, that they be able to keep also 20 one year or younger. And this to give the person a chance to rotate the productive hens as well as the roosters. And at some point, they got to get rid of some of the fliers, but they might be able to keep the pullets to rotate the productive hens. So I'll be willing to support two roosters for 20 hens as well as 20 below the age of one year. But I'm open to
20 cockerels too, or are you talking about just 20 pullets?
Well, I mean, they're going to be mixed pullets. And I know that after I read the article in the Star Telegram, it seemed like everybody thinks it's funny.
Right.
But believe me, I know here my councilman here to my left, he thought that there's going to be one happy rooster.
Right, right, right.
And I kind of concur with him. But however, the reason I brought it up, and I'm aware of some that's taking place on the city, there's some changes that are taking place, as far as citizens moving in. They're used to different type of culture. You know, they're raised with something else in mind. And I, for one, I feel that if you have some hens in a family, that creates to keep the family together more. It actually promotes feelings for the young ones when they see the little ones fetch and whatever. I think it gives an opportunity to a father to teach his little one's responsibility.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think it's, to me, I think it's, I would certainly recommend that try to do that for the kids and keep them occupied so they won't be thinking and trying to go and shoot in somebody in school.
Right.
And so I, for one, I really feel that the only thing that I want is to put a control that doesn't get out of hand. Because at a given time, if we leave the ordinance as it was, a hundred birds, that means at a given time, they're going to have, they can have 100 ostriches, 100 emus, or 100 roosters, and they can do a lot of crowing.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to put something in place that will make everybody happy and enjoy living as neighbors. That's my main concern.
Right. And I can understand that. The APA, the APA, the poultry press, in the breeding of the birds to better your flock, to be better than what you were this year, they recommend you put three to four females with each male. I know at my house, I have a male line and a female line. That's what you have to have. And so, you know, you could have as many as 20 females is plenty on something like, if you raised from 20 females, you'd have thousands of chicks. You don't need that. But to go, I think it's not right, if, where we're showing, put it this way, I could not win, nor could anyone else out here win, in the shows in the United States, if I bred from one or two males. I cannot do that. Nor could anyone in cattle, horses, dogs, or anything else. And that's why, you know, we would need, I agree with what you're saying, and I have given so many birds away. I'll sell birds, and my birds will go for $250 on up. But I'll give them to kids, and I have many kids in Haltem City that I've given birds to that they have shown, if they show, it shows. So I agree with you on the fact of raising them, taking care of them, responsibility, I do agree with that. And that's why I think when you limit the male to where we can't raise anymore, then you're defeating that purpose of helping the youth.
So what you're suggesting is for the number of roosters, for the chow chickens, you know, for chow, the roosters with three hens, four hens?
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, to breed, for breeding, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And sir, the breed stock never goes to a showroom. They're too valuable to go to a showroom. You breed from them, and you take their offspring, and you go to the shows with them. And there's three or four males, a year, if they're over a year, they're called a cock. And if they're over a year, they're called a hen. I've got three cocks that we're breeding from and seven or eight hens. When you are right, we change them out every three years, no matter what, we change them out. We give them away because you don't want to breed from them more than that. And then the cockerels, like I said, you show them. At Fort Worth, I showed 10 cockerels. So that's how many I had. And like I said, I've raised them here in 25 years, and never has I had a neighbor complain or anything. But I mean, we do take care of them, and that's what I'm getting at.
Perhaps council would entertain some special consideration for these, the people that raise them for show. I have, if you don't mind, just staying right there for a minute, I have some other lights, there may be some other questions. Councilmember Patino, I'm sorry, were you finished with your question?
Yes, I'm trying to, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's strange that you would entertain the thought of special consideration, because I had my special consideration light on.
Oh.
I believe when we entertained this concept at our last meeting, at least I felt that we were attempting to address residential situations as opposed to a business situation. I think the business situation went right by us, to be honest with you. I don't think that it ever crossed our mind that there might be someone out there doing this as a business or as a serious hobby competitively, whatever. I think that you've brought up a point that needs to be addressed here. And I think the way to do this is to look at it from a standpoint of people that are competing or people that are doing this for profit or whatever appear to be housing these birds inside. And we were talking about birds that were roaming around people's backyards. And I am certainly aware of what that's like, because my mother had six of them until about three or four months ago, and she had two roosters. And yes, they do make some noise, I will agree. She decided that she was getting a little too old to keep up with them, so she got rid of hers. But I don't really believe that they caused enough trouble for the people around them to complain, because I never heard anything about it. When you're dealing with 15 or 20 roosters, if you've got them in a confined area, that's 20 by 12 or whatever you're talking about, then they're not out in the open, and you're not going to get as much noise pollution from them, you're not going to get as much air pollution from them. It's a completely different situation. So what I would propose is some type of amendment to the ordinance that would take into consideration someone that needs to actually have more roosters on hand, and provided that they can be done in a manner such as we've talked about here, I think that we can still accomplish what we're wanting to with the general public. You know, they still have the right to keep them within the mandate of the square footage that we've talked about. And the people that are raising them competitively and for show, they'll also have the opportunity to continue. What we're looking for here is something that's fair and equitable to you, and fair and equitable to the people that live next door, to people that have them roaming around their backyards. So basically, I would like to ask Councilwoman Patino to entertain the thought of maybe amending the original ordinance as it was presented, to take into consideration this particular type of situation. And I don't know what the answer is as far as size goes. I mean, they already meet the square footage standards that we had. So I think if you was to write something in there pertaining to the actual housing of more birds than have been previously stated in the ordinance, maybe we can get to a happy medium that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patino, before you begin, I have a couple of other lights. Does anyone want to say anything that hasn't already been said? Councilmember Hurley?
Well, I was going to suggest before Council Jennings did, that we could create an exemption for the raiser and breeder of showbirds, and still stick the same basic ordinance on the square footage, if that would be agreeable, Mr. Patino. That might solve the problem, with the attorney writing an exemption into the ordinance.
That sounds pretty much like what we were discussing. Councilmember Williams?
I have two items, Madam Mayor. One of them, with your raising these game hens and game roosters, are these fowl, or are they registered, or they?
We don't raise game, we're not fighting them.
Birds, or?
The poultry that we're raising, the showbirds, no, you don't register them. They are full blood. There's a standard of perfection, as you have in horses, dogs, it has 100 points. There are judges, full-time judges, that judge every show. And so you do have a standard of perfection that calls for the breed, the type, the color. And so they do have to be full-blood, and if they're not, of course, you can tell that. But there's no registering them, you don't register them or anything like that, sir.
Okay. On this ordinance, and I'm reading that the attorney has drafted for us, I see this, is no more than 20 pounds may be kept on one family of residentially zoned property in the city. If the owner of the fowl complies with the following restrictions: the fowl must be kept on or on track of land under one ownership containing a minimum of 10,000 square feet. The fowl must be kept at least 100 feet from adjacent residential structure, and the fowl must be kept in a manner that does not create a nuisance. I've failed to find in here anywhere where it limits a person to how many roosters they can have. Is that oversight on our?
Yes, actually, Councilmember, it was, and that had been clarified in a different version, but there should be a reference in the document to 20 females and one male of the same species is the wording that should be in place. But you are indeed correct that in the version that you got, there was not a reference to the male, which was the council's action at your last meeting.
Okay, are we going to amend that too, or how are we going to?
I don't know that it's necessary to amend that, because that was your previous action, but certainly if you want to clarify that in the instructions to the attorney, that may be appropriate.
Well, with Mr. Rust, the way he's talking, it's very possible that he could have 20 roosters or 20 cockerels at one time. I guess a cockerel is one younger than a year.
During the showtime, yes, sir, from September to probably January, you know, we might have, other than our brute stuff, you might have 15 show cockerels and 15 show pullets that you'd be showing. There's many weekends that I'll go in one direction, my partner will go in the other direction, and we'll make three shows in one weekend, from Kansas to Florida to, you know, and to do that, yeah, you know, we may have 15 show birds, 15 show males, 15 show females, and everything.
If we make a special exception, that's not going to make any difference. How many he has.
I'm waiting on a motion.
Councilmember Jennings?
Well, I just thought of another point that we might use to differentiate between someone that's doing this professionally or whatever. He mentioned the fact that Texas A&amp;M University comes by and inspects his birds yearly. So if we use that as part of a criteria to determine who is truly doing this professionally versus who has a house, you know, with 50 chickens in it.
Yeah.
I think maybe you get the type of restriction that we're looking for, and it still fits their situation here. But we're also ensuring the general public that there won't be somebody out there that, you know, puts one of these things in with, you know, 100 chickens, maybe 50 roosters in there, and says, well, you know, I'm showing them.
Right.
That way, we have a way to kind of check up on it.
All right.
So I thought maybe we might want to entertain the idea of putting that in there, too.
Okay. Councilmember Henserling?
Well, the comment or question I was going to have, since we're going to make a special exception, it sounds like, to this ordinance, which I have no problem with that, it's just, I don't know if it might be better if we, hate to say table it, but table it till we can have a little bit more research done, maybe from our animal control people, see what other cities do. You said you have members that are part of your association that live in other cities. What does some of the other cities do? And I'm uncomfortable leaving an unlimited amount in the exemption part, because that's pretty broad. I'd like to see a little bit more specific. And the bottom line with this is noise. And if, even as a breeder, if they violate the noise ordinance, they are subjected to the same due process as someone that's not breeding. And that's, the bottom line here is trying to take care of some noise. So I would say let staff do some more research.
Yeah. If we're going to amend the ordinance, we have to have it brought back next time, anyway. So. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that our city attorney would need the proper name or clarification or whatever of the Texas A&amp;M accreditation program. That would need to be spelled out specifically, I would think.
All right. I can bring my health papers up here. You, in anywhere in America, anywhere in Canada, you cannot take a bird in to show him, to sell him. He cannot enter a showroom without the health papers, and that's what you get from Texas A&amp;M. They come in, they test them once for the state, then they come back, if you go out of state and test them again, to be able to travel them wherever you want to take them. And I do have those papers I could bring up here.
If you could help us, then that would help us to help you.
You would make sure the city attorney had got copies of that, and that hopefully will speed things along a little bit.
As much information as I can get to include in the ordinance so that you have a draft that at least would purport to be a final draft for you to vote on at your next council meeting. I would suggest that this information be given through animal control, and then they can funnel it on to me after they've looked at all the different information that you have that might be pertinent to the type of exception that the council's talking about here.
Then if council's agreeable, we will table this until April the 9th, when we'll have a rewrite of the ordinance. Councilmember Patino?
Take a minute, Mayor. Mr. Rust, I just got one more question from you. Does Texas A&amp;M requires anything special for you to maintain your coats, such as a whitewash?
No, sir.
They don't?
No, sir. No, sir. They just come out and blood test them. They take blood, and they test them on site for diseases and stuff like that. They have no control of how you keep your pens or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rust. We'll revisit this on April the 9th.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is a public hearing, Agenda Item Number 18. Ms. Eisen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular public hearing is on a zoning case. The application has been submitted for a The application has been submitted for a conditional use permit, which would allow auto sales in an M2 heavy industrial district. The piece of property in question is located at twenty-four, or twenty-eight fourteen North Beach Street.
I'll now open the public hearing, and is the applicant present? Sir, do you wish to address the council, or wait and see if there are questions? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wanting to speak against? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance. Counsel? Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that ordinance number zero dash two thousand one dash zero one four dash one five be denied. I really don't think we need something of this caliber in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanselring?
One quick question for, I wasn't going to second, but do you want to get second first?
Do I have a second? Councilmember Williams?
Just for a second.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hurley, did you have discussion as well?
Yeah, I was just for a second.
Okay. Councilmember Hanselring?
Just a question to Wayne Olson, legal counsel. Is there a problem with denying this particular case tonight, for any reason?
No, if the council thinks it's inappropriate to grant this permit, you certainly have the right to vote it down. I would recommend that you give the applicant an opportunity to address the council if he wants to.
I did. Oh, again?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, would you like to come forward and address the council? No, you don't care to? What do you suggest I do now?
I'd suggest you call for a vote, unless there are other issues.
Okay. Councilmember Jennings?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to make one comment about Councilmember Markham's motion. I would have to agree that this is not the location that I would like to see this type of operation, but I would have to say that I would disagree with a part of your statement that we do not need this type of business in Halltown City. I believe that's not what you meant.
No, that's not what I meant.
I believe that's what you meant, but I just wanted to clear that up. We certainly do want all of the business that we can get in Halltown City, provided that it is the type of business that helps our community out, helps our tax base, and is located in an area that will not cause a problem as far as zoning. And this particular location is not conducive to that type of operation. It is right off one of our main arteries, and I would have to be in support of that motion, with the exception of that one statement. Thank you.
Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the benefit of Mr. Ayala, just to let you know that I'll be voting no, for the simple reason that our city, we're in the process of revising our comprehensive land use plan, and we really don't know at this time what the city really got in the future for this area. I hate to see a business like this going on on Beach. Now, I'm not against used car lots, I walk in them, but that particular area, I'm a little hesitant, but I thought I owed it to you to let you know why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
I feel the same way. The gentleman needs some sort of explanation of what the reason that we're saying no, or the reason I'm saying no. The piece of property you selected is on Beach Street. It's outside of the corridor of what is, since the new C5 zoning that they've adopted recently.
Councilmember Williams? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think we've been there. I think we've explained to him enough.
If you don't want me to tell him, I will not tell him. I had a very good object, though.
I have a motion and a second, gentlemen. Please register your vote. If you vote yes, it means you vote to deny. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Agenda item number twenty is also a public hearing. Mr. Eisen?
The subject of this public hearing is also a rezoning case. The location of the property is a northwest corner of Denton Highway and Loop Eight Twenty. The application this evening is for an expansion of the existing U-Haul operation that's currently located at that intersection. The expansion, if the planned development district is amended this evening, would allow for an additional one hundred and twenty-seven storage units for a location for RV recreation vehicle storage, and also for a propane tank from which retail sales would be made.
Thank you. I now open the public hearing. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Do you wish to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jimmy Schnurr, S-C-H-N-U-R-R. My address is five four hundred Renaissance Tower, Dallas, Texas, seven five two zero one. I'm here tonight on behalf of U-Haul International. We are here to request the extension of the existing use at three seventy-seven and eight twenty. We feel that the extension of this use is the only reasonable and viable use for this particular piece of property. It's adjacent to the current existing use. However, the only access to this particular portion of the property is through a mutual access easement agreement. We currently own both lots, therefore it'd be very difficult to market this site to anyone else. Additionally, because of the screening of the site with the existing U-Haul structure that's there, also because from eight twenty, it's depressed, it's kind of a difficult site to locate, and it makes it very difficult to market it to any other entity. We feel that this use is a very low-density use. It generates very little traffic compared to other types of uses that could be located here. We've worked closely with the staff regarding the site plan and all the technical issues as far as erosion, and here tonight with me is Mr. Constantine Bakintas. He's here to answer any specific questions you may have regarding the site plan. We feel that this new site plan has provided a very good screening plan for the property. I did hear some comments in the briefing concerning the existing landscaping on the property. We'd like you to please keep in mind that we feel we have added quite a bit of landscaping to this plan for the entire site, and in order to occupy the new storage area, in order to get our certificate of occupancy, we will have to install the landscaping in order to occupy that. Additionally, we feel like we have been a good neighbor to the community, and we respectfully request your approval of this request, and like I said, we're here to answer any specific questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, sir. If you'll just stick close by.
Sure.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone want to speak against? Then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the corresponding ordinance. Counsel?
Just a couple of questions for Mr. Schnurr. First, the obvious question. Is the widening of eight twenty in any way going to impact more so your existing property and also this additional property?
Mr. Bakintas can address that. I would like to add that I raised that question at the, I mean, that question was raised at the PMZ level, and Mr. Pliska responded that, you know, we're not aware of any plans to put in the service road at that location because of the steepness. You know, we're not certain of the feasibility of putting in an added service road at that location. I mean, I'm sure you're all familiar with the topography of that site, and, you know, I can answer it from that standpoint, okay?
Good evening. Name is Constantine Bakintas. I'm the civil engineer assisting U-Haul with this project, and the specific answer to your question is, yes, we are anticipating some right-of-way take, and the site plan, which has been prepared and submitted, does show the take when it does occur.
Okay.
Our facility will remain functional, although we will not have as much room, obviously, as we currently have on the south side.
So it won't encroach in any of your existing landscaping or concrete parking drive, that sort of thing?
It will. All that will have to be reconstructed.
Wow, okay. The other question I had, really mainly is for staff, and the first question, maybe Bill can answer this, is, has our landscaping requirement changed since we originally did Phase One of this project tonight?
It has not, but keep in mind that originally, the project was done as a planned development, and in a planned development, there's a specific site plan, which enumerates specific landscaping at certain locations. That doesn't necessarily conform to what the general requirement would be in the zoning ordinance for landscaping in a commercial area, and probably originally, the landscaping exceeded a little bit what the ordinance would have required if it had been a straight zoning district. And also, what's being considered this evening is also a planned development, and the council is not restricted to what the general landscaping requirements are in commercial districts when you're looking at a planned development, and you could add to or take from that as you see fit and deem appropriate.
Okay. The reason I asked that question is, you heard in pre-council, we were talking about, and I specifically brought up the density of the landscaping that we have up there now, and, you know, looking on the paper here, it looks like you'd get good cover and you'd get good, you know, protection between the eight twenty and the traffic and the facility, but right now, the type of trees we're putting in are not maturing, are not getting the type of spread or growth that we would like to get good, lack of visibility, whatever that word would be, but that's my concern. First off, it's kind of, it's very thin right now, and it looks like we're going to put in the same type of trees that you presently have, and they're Schumard oak, I believe, is what's being indicated, and I don't know, maybe Councilmember Patino can add something to this, but there's not, those don't put out a big canopy once they're developed, and maybe a better type of landscaping, tree option would be better in that case, I'm not sure, but...
Sure. Mr. Bakintas can address the specific species that they're installing. I will add that typically, in ordinances, it's appropriate to put in that landscaping and trees will be installed and maintained in a healthy and growing condition.
Right.
To hold us accountable. I did drive by the site tonight, and I do see your concerns about the existing trees that are there as far as the coverage, but I think that this site plan is particularly targeting adding a lot of coverage and screening to the site.
Okay.
Landscaping needs to be fertilized, too.
And watered.
And yes, that does help it grow some.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm a civil engineer, not a landscape architect.
Sure.
We did have a professional landscape architect prepare this document, and it clearly indicates the existing trees. It identifies them as existing live oak or existing red oak.
Yes.
And you can follow that around. All the proposed trees are shown and not called out as existing. There are a lot of Schumard oak called out along Interstate Loop Eight Twenty, and this is in compliance with the ordinance as we understand it. In fact, it's a little bit beyond, as I've learned in discussing this with the landscape architect. We feel that what has been proposed will do a good job if it's maintained, and that's the key issue here.
I'm sorry.
We'd consider any suggestions council may have with regards to the plan, though.
Well, since part of what we're talking about in this, I think we're going to end up maybe tabling this, is where we maybe end up going, I'm not sure, but the points that I'd like to make is, I'd like to see on the planned development, make sure there's irrigation indicated, and I think the ongoing maintenance, that's just part of the regular code compliance process, so I think I'd see irrigation. And also, we learned from the Phase One of the project, when it was initially installed, the state put some restrictions on the egress and ingress of the facility, and it was right in, right out only, and I would like to see that on the planned development as well, if we can do that. I think that's a key part of it, because if this thing does move forward, and you have RVs trying to turn left going northbound off of Denton Highway, you're going to have a mess, and it's going to be a critical situation, I think, so I think that's imperative that be added to this. Those are the couple of comments that I have.
Okay. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to ask our director of planning, Mr. Pliska, to repeat what he told the council in pre-council regarding the issue of citations.
Yes, there are some pending issues on citations that have been issued to U-Haul. Of particular, of the most recent that I'm familiar are parking of the trucks as display and parking them on Lot Two, which is an undeveloped lot and not consisting of asphalt or hard surface.
There's been no attempt to address those citations at all?
I'm not aware of the situation in terms of the citations, and if they're pending in court, but I myself, when I toured the facility and doing research on the facility with their site plan, on the day of touring the facility, I did make note of the trucks that were parked on the unimproved surface, and we did report that to code inspectors, and it's my understanding that citations were issued.
Thank you, Mr. Pliska. Mayor, I'm not opposed to the project as long as they comply, you know, with the landscape that's required, and also the citations. If there's a problem there, then I think it certainly needs to be looked into, and I got a feeling that's going to be looked into tomorrow.
Actually, I spoke with the corporate representatives at U-Haul last week and explained to them that this issue did come up at the PMZ. It wasn't discussed out here, but in the briefing, it was mentioned that there were citations. I actually drove by the site, and I saw a truck that was located in the dirt area, which with all the rain, it was actually mud, and I explained that to the vice president of the company. He said that he would immediately address that issue and make sure that it's not an issue anymore. I drove by there tonight, I didn't see any out there. As far as parking trucks in other locations on the site, I think that one thing to keep in mind is that the nature of this use itself, a truck rental, a lot of people that rent these trucks to move across country, they're not typically people that normally drive trucks all the time. When they come on to the property, as far as where to park the vehicle, U-Haul is making strides to better inform their customers as far as where to park the trucks when they return them versus what's appropriate. I think this site plan does address that with additional parking spaces. There's going to be additional parking spaces for trucks on the second lot, but U-Haul has conveyed to me that they are making strides to better inform their drivers as to where to park, and that that is something that they do want to address.
I think the council has the feeling that they've, pardon me, they've sort of thumbed their noses at us for a while, and because it's been ongoing, and why they, I don't know the condition or where the citations are at this point, if they're in court, or just not being, if no one is paying attention to them, but I think that to be a good citizen, they would absolutely abide by the rules and regulations.
Absolutely, and we are, in fact, the corporate office was unaware of specifically how many citations have been issued, specifically what have they been issued for, whether or not it's an isolated incident, whether or not it's a situation where, you know, people are really coming over themselves to move into this area, and it's kind of a rush period where you have an influx of trucks on a particular day, you know, where they just have to park them wherever they can. But typically, for that type of use, it's not their intention to just leave trucks laying around throughout the site. You know, they want to rent these trucks and move them out and have a nice turnover on them, and, you know, the previous mayor of this city, which, I don't know if I got that information, but somebody said he wasn't the most pro-business mayor, actually commended U-Haul as a good citizen of this city, and actually gave a proclamation. I have a copy of it, if you're interested.
No.
But U-Haul, as far as, you know, receiving a proclamation as such, they felt like, you know, that the city has conveyed to them that they have been a good neighbor to the community, and they definitely want to continue to be a good neighbor. If there are specific code enforcement issues, obviously, they're going to address that, and that has been conveyed to them through this process, and they are addressing that currently, so...
I'm not denying that they may have been a good corporate neighbor whenever this proclamation was issued, but we know- proclamation was issued, but we know right now that's not happening.
Sure.
So it's kind of not apples and apples.
Sure. And it's my understanding that you would like to hold this over to the next meeting, and I think it will be most helpful for U-Haul to get a specific handle on how many citations have been issued, whether or not these are just a couple of isolated incidents that are, you know, being brought forth to sound like it's an ongoing thing-
Right.
-or whether or not it is, in fact, an issue that they need to address. And I think that specifically, this site plan will address some of those issues as far as with providing additional truck spaces in the back.
I know it can be a problem when corporate is located someplace else, but then you have to look towards your local manager-
Absolutely.
-kind of up to them to let corporate know what's going on, and so maybe, you know, he might need to be reminded.
Absolutely, and there will definitely be a reminder.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up on the concerns of Councilman Hanseling on the landscape plan. First of all, this Schumard oak is about the best type of oak that will really establish itself in this area, so I'm satisfied with that. But I would like to see in this plan the addition of, to show the irrigation system to water these trees. And also, now Councilman Hanseling mentioned the concern that some of the present trees that have not developed. Now, one reason I think that they not developed was when I saw them after they were planted, seemed to me like they were kind of stunned trees. That's why that I'm also requesting that they be used, nothing but field-selected, preferably container-grown. A container grown will grow a lot faster than any other. As far as meeting the caliper and the height, it's already here. And it's very, it's very important that when you, when the job is finished, that you have a chow on there with the trees. The last time some of those trees were put in there, they didn't, they didn't show much. So that's one thing that I would like to see. Mr. Pliska?
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanseling?
One quick question. I think it was mentioned that, did you say there would not be an access road when 820 was widened?
I'm just saying that when we discussed it the last time, we weren't aware of any plans of an access road-
We have not encountered any tech stock plans to view the situation. The only discussion that took place was the difference in the grade of the site versus 820.
Sure. Right. To your knowledge, City Manager Bill Lawson, do we, are they anticipating an access road between-
There will undoubtedly be an access road between Denton Highway and Halton Road. The question apparently is, will it be at the elevation that the driving lanes are at today, or will it be at the elevation that these properties are located at? There have been some plans drafted, and they should be available at tech stock offices to review exactly where the service roads will be, and if the council does table this matter, then certainly we would have the opportunity to review that project in the next meeting. But keep in mind, those drawings at this point are tentative at best, and there have been no public hearings held on that specific design. The public hearings will be held in the year 2000, from what we're told, and obviously, that schedule wasn't met, and we're not exactly sure when that's going to happen. So sometime in the near future, public hearings will be held on those designs that have already been done, but they are not official yet, but they may be informative and maybe instructional in assisting the council with how to deal with the case.
Well, I think it's, be a key part of this to know whether there's going to be an access road through there, to evaluate whether this is going to be the best use of that particular access road, depending on what the direction we want that part of town to go. So, thank you.
Council would be ready for a motion? Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to table.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, may I ask when this will be heard next, then?
Councilmember Jennings, do you want to set a date for...
I think it would certainly be contingent on the information that we're requesting from city staff as far as information having to do with the access road. Also, I don't think it would take too long to get back to them with the amount of tickets and the number of tickets and get that worked out. If we can get it all done within two-week period of time, next council meeting will be sufficient.
April the 9th?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Markham, that would be, you would include that with your second. Our next agenda item is Agenda Item Number 22, also a public hearing. Ms. Dryson?
This item also, Madam Mayor, is a zoning request change, zoning change request. The property in question is currently zoned D or duplex. The applicant proposes to change the zoning on the property to C3 Commercial District. Property is located in the 2400 block of Monita Street. The purpose of the request is the applicant desires to place a landscaping business at the location.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you care to address the council or wait and see if there are questions? All right, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Witt, 1905 Calendar Hill Road in Mansfield. Mayor Watkins and council members, I just wanted to, the project that I'm bringing forth today, I think is a pretty, a small self-explanatory project, and y'all may have some questions, but I just wanted to let y'all know kind of how I became involved in this process. This property's been in my family's name for over 50 years. It was my grandparents' homestead, and they've been passed away for over 15 years, and kind of some things became available to me. My father gave me the opportunity to do something with the property. It's been vacant for over 15 years, and I've been in the landscape business professionally. I've got a degree in landscape architecture from the University of Texas in Arlington. And basically, I work in Dallas now, and I think the opportunity presented itself for me to take, to take this and turn something into it. And I'm basically at that point where I think I'd like to be able to do that if I can get this passed through. And I really think it's going to be a good thing for the city and some, and some local cities as well. It's something that, I'm a pretty motivated individual, and I like what I do, and I really want to kind of bring something to the city that I think I have got something to offer.
All right. Thank you very much. Just kind of stay close by in case there's any questions. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone to speak against? If not, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the corresponding ordinance. Council? Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance number 0-2001-016-15.
Councilmember Avery?
Mine was for motion, but I'll, second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes. Welcome to Halton City. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is our Visitors and Citizens Forum. A five-minute time limit will be granted. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forward at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. And I do have, I do have some speakers cards. Mr. Dan Lewis?
Work and have since they opened it up in September. I tried driving a couple of days after, I tried driving my car a couple of days after I started riding the train, and I want to tell you, the roads got narrower in that week, the trucks got bigger, the commuters got meaner, and so I'm back on the train to stay. It's, yeah, it takes a little longer. It's an hour and a half commute to Carrollton instead of 50 minutes, or 50 minutes is, you wish. You wish it's always that good. But on the other hand, sometimes the commute is not so good on the train and the bus. However, it opens up some opportunity for people to get around without slamming my air with all the stuff that Council of Governments is in trouble for us having, all the bad pollution that we're having trouble with. I would kind of suspect maybe that's why Loop 820 isn't being widened at this moment, and maybe why we didn't have that hearing in year 2000 on the widening of Loop 820. Our air is so bad that the EPA's got a moratorium coming, if it isn't officially here yet, on construction. Anyway, for every TRE train that goes back and forth, that's that many fewer cars driving back and forth on Loop 820. And we just cannot keep up with the traffic, so to speak, by building more and more and more roads wider and wider. It boggles my mind that Halton City does not participate in mass transit. And I would strongly encourage you to favorably consider that when, when mass transit comes up for your consideration, doing what we can to help get a bus or trolley of some sort to the local businesses and the local residences. It goes both ways to the trendy rail, because there's one plan that would have the, what's now the Tarantula train route, I think it's actually the Cotton Belt Route from, I believe, North Fort Worth right into Carrollton. And we would have a, we would have an opportunity to maybe put a stop on, they put a, a station on that route and bring quite a bit of opportunity for people to commute in and out of Halton City, whether it's increased business or increased residents. It's a good opportunity, okay? So when, I know it was a consent agenda item for consideration, and I appreciate the city and city management is considering bus service, and I want to encourage that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Ross Laven, am I saying your name correctly?
Yes, you are.
I didn't exactly understand for the agenda item exactly what you had in mind, so I just, you have executive session, and since you can't speak in executive session, I just put you under Visitors and Citizens Forum.
That'd be great.
So I hope that's okay.
It's perfect.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ross Laven, and I'm an attorney, and my offices are in Belton, Texas. I don't know how many of y'all are familiar with Belton. My address is 1710 Morgan's Point Road, and I'm in private practice. And I'd like to thank you, Madam Mayor Watkins and members of the council, for allowing me to speak to you. The subject that I would like to speak to you about are eight-liner machines. And the eight-liner machines are, of course, a subject of a lawsuit that was filed against the city of Halton City, and I don't want to spend a lot of time getting into the specifics of the legalities of it. That's not my, my purpose in visiting with you all tonight. First of all, the, the situation with the lawsuit that's been filed, of course, involves some businesses that we represent, and Mr. Eddie Shell is the attorney of record for the folks that actually filed the suit, and he couldn't be with us tonight. But there are citizens that own businesses that are up and running in the city of Halton City that have been singled out for, essentially, to be shut down by an ordinance that was created by the city council. And I am here to just put a bug in your ear, because I understand that this is going to be brought up in executive session, and matters pending litigation and other matters that specifically identify the eight-liner machines are going to be discussed during executive session. And I would like, I know that I can't speak in the executive session, but I would like to take an opportunity after this meeting to try and put an agenda item for the next meeting of the city council that we might be able to have the council take some action. Now, I need, and I'm asking you folks to please understand, that we did not pick to make a fight with the city of Halton City. We represent these folks that want very much to be good, responsible, law-abiding citizens. And the issue of the eight-liners, and I think the council is aware, is something that has been hotly contested and litigated all over the state. And the status of the machines and the status of the law in this state is that they're legal, assuming that they're operated when they're not being used as gambling devices. For example, it's not illegal to have a slot machine in your home. It's not illegal to throw dice in your home, but those can be used as gambling devices. And it's the manner and the means in which the instrument is used that constitutes gambling and not the machines themselves. Those machines are legal, and we've advised our clients that they're legal, and they want to continue to operate. Now, this lawsuit that's been filed, I think one of the fundamental issues that I'm going to ask the city council to please explore during executive session is the question of whether or not these businesses can be grandfathered into an existing situation where folks in the future perhaps might be prohibited under this ordinance. That is, it is not our desire to try and attack this ordinance, to have it be declared unconstitutional or void, because, you know, arguably, the council is stepping on the toes of the legislators that this minute are taking up the question of these eight-liner machines. Our preference is that you allow these businesses to remain in operation. You can grandfather them, just like, and thank you for keeping it on the clock, because I've got a tendency to speak past my time.
Well, the buzzer will go off.
Thank you very much. The, as I said, the machines are legal, just like you can grandfather somebody, suppose there was an ordinance that you wanted to pass that required newly constructed homes to have 75% veneer finish, well, of course, that, the folks that already have their homes built would be grandfathered. It's the same principle. The alternative is a very significantly expensive litigation, not just in the pending lawsuit in the district court in Tarrant County, but also the matter of the issuance of citations, because it is our position that we're going to set every case, that's every citation that's issued for a jury trial, and we're going to appeal it, assuming that there's a conviction, to the county court, and we think that we can last longer than the city can as far as spending money is concerned, and we don't want to do that. These businesses, these individuals that are present tonight want to be proud, hold their head high, good-standing members of the community. They've paid their taxes, they've got their permits, they are complying with state law, and if the legislature decides that they want to outlaw eight-liner machines, they can do that. And I've taken up my time. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. You had said something about wanting to place something on a future agenda item. Since this is, since this is a lawsuit pending-
Yes, ma'am.
-I would suggest you take that up with our city attorney.
I will do that, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Louthen? Please state your name and address for the record.
Well, depending on who you talk to in the city, I have several names, but my name is Bill Louthen. I live at 1924 Higgins Lane. I do business at 5020 Stanley Keller. Every December, we take off for a while. When I came back this December, or from the visit we do in December, came back, there was a letter in my mailbox that my arcade video game permit had expired or is supposed to expire on January the 1st. Well, we reopened the business January 5th. January the 8th, I got more than one person calling me and telling me I needed to get this taken care of. January the 8th, sometime in the afternoon, I came down to the city secretary's office, brought everything that was asked of me, all the information, filled out the papers, signed it right there in front of her, tried to pay her for the permit, and she told me, no, it takes about a week. I'd pay when I came back in. Got fined. I never heard from her again until March the 15th at 12:30 PM, right in the busiest part of my day, customers lined up from the counter to the door. Two policemen come in with two pieces of paper, said, "Mr. Louthen, could you..." Two policemen come in with two pieces of paper, said, Mr. Louthen, could you come here just a second? We need you to sign this. I said, what is it? I didn't have time to read it. I said, what is it? He said, well, it's about the video game permit. They said, well, I said, well, I've already signed, I've already got that taken care of. They just hadn't got back with me. He goes, that's all right, we know it doesn't apply to you, that's okay, don't worry about it, doesn't apply to you. Well, I took him at his word, signed the paper, he gave me mine, he left. Right in the middle of my noon rush, all this happened. When I finally got slowed down where I could read the paper, it says that my games had been inspected and they were out of compliance. And as of tomorrow, March 27th, I would be subject to a $500 per day violation. I came down, talked to the city secretary, she told me to come up here and talk to you guys because y'all are the ones that did it. My question is, how can I be out of compliance when I came in on January the 8th, did exactly what I was told to do, had serial numbers, everything, tried to pay, and they wouldn't take the money? How can I be out of compliance? The problem is, part of it, if I had the figures right, it would have cost me, on January the 8th, it would have cost me 100 and, for four games I was trying to get the permit for, it would have cost $128. And now I'm told it'll cost 360. How can that be legal? How can it be legal when the city sent me the paper saying for me to come in, it expired on January the 1st? Can anybody explain that?
I think that I would need to know a little bit more about who said what to who and who did what to who, but if I can.
It's right here in the letter.
Well, you've kind of caught me off guard. If you could, of course, we can't debate this.
I know you can't debate it, but there's no debating to it. How can you even debate it when the city sent me the letter?
There is a debate.
It was in my mailbox, said it expired on January 1st. I tried to get the thing taken care of and the city evidently wouldn't accept it. How can I be out of compliance?
Well, I don't know what you said to the city secretary or what she said to you. And when you ask me a question, it does turn into a debate. If I can talk to you at another time, you tell me when and we can do that. I'm open to whatever's good for you.
Well, can I ask you a question? Do you intend to enforce this March 27th date? It says in here that we'll be subject to a $500 per day fine. Or at that time, at the same time, March 27th, if these games do not, I see if, or in violation of state law, the games will be seized by the city. Is that going to be enforced?
I would suspect it will be.
How can it be enforced when I tried to come in January the 1st, January the 8th, and get my permit taken care of?
Mr. Louthen, if I can talk to you at any other time, I can't, we can't go through this anymore right now.
Well, follow them down there tomorrow when they try to pick up my games and we'll talk then. Thank you.
Someone, I just got handed this card for agenda item number 17. And sir, we've passed that whoever, Mr. Prophet?
Remember me?
We passed that a long time ago. Did you maybe have the wrong item on here? Our next agenda item is announcements and events. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one announcement. The minority committee affairs on our meeting that we had yesterday, March 25th, they asked me to announce that at present time, the committee is in the process of establishing a minority affairs committee hotline to give all minorities an opportunity to call with any questions that they might have, that they are affecting their way of life in our city. As soon as this hotline is implanted, we will be announced the telephone number. If I'm making, I also do this in Spanish? Sure? El comité de asuntos de minoritía me ha pedido que anuncie que en lo presente están en progreso de establecer una línea telefónica para que se pongan en contacto con algunas preguntas que tengan que le afecten su sistema de vida aquí en la ciudad de Halton City. Tan pronto como esta línea es establecida, le daremos el número de teléfono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilmember Williams?
Madam Mayor, I have an announcement. We have a trash dumpster day last Saturday. The weather didn't cooperate with us very well, but we had a very big turnout. We filled out approximately somewhere around 17, 18, 30 to 40 yard dumpsters. This was a project taken on by the beautification board. David Harper's the chairman of that. Fran Burns and Lisa that work here at the city hall were there and the beautification board members were there. ISI provided the dumpsters to have the items taken away. And the street department had a Mr. Coleman and a Mr. Hord that worked with us to ensure that the trash was properly pressed down into the containers to keep it from blowing out once they got on, everyone able to cover it up. And I want to thank all the citizens that participated in that and let the citizens know that some of the things that they brought down, such as couches, love seats, there was electric range, lawn mowers, a lot of the things that they brought down there Saturday, is they will just put that out there with their normal pickup. ISI will pick that up. If it's something that two men can handle, or if it's brushed and it's four footer or shorter and weighs less than 50 pounds, they can pick that up. So I think some of the citizens still don't know that they will pick that up. So I want to thank everybody for their participation. Thank our board. Jimbo stood out there and got soaking wet all day and some of the other members, but I appreciate their dedication to the city. And we took out about 6,000 cubic feet of trash out of Halton City.
Thank you. And I appreciate everybody that stood out there in the cold and wet also. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to remind everyone of the Spring Fest is coming Saturday. I believe that it will be held at the Halton Mill Park. As last year, I believe if you'll come out, that you will have a most wonderful time. We did last year. It's fun, it's, you can have fun with your neighbors and see people you haven't seen in many, many years. And I think a good time will be had by all. Thank you, Mayor.
Guarantee. Councilmember Henstrill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the last council meeting, but there was an item on the consent agenda that was, that dealt with the straightaway drive project up in the Iron Horse West community. And I just want to say a word of thanks to quite a number of people, really staff for their persistence in dealing with TechDOT and getting that project finally pushed through. And this is a project that's been talked about for a couple of years now, maybe over two years. And past councils and present councils have stuck with the project. And I just want to let the folks at Iron Horse West know that their construction is due to be started within the next 60 days or so up there, I believe. The contract's been let. But just a word of thanks and a word of information. Thank you.
Thank you. This Friday at 10:00 AM at 3212 Midway Road, we'll have the groundbreaking for our new animal shelter and adoption center. So love to see you come out and join us. This will be our first new city building in over 20 years. So I think that deserves, that deserves a lot of folks showing up. Also, I've received a card from Lee Denim Company. Our city staff took place last October for National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. City staff took, they took part in this event and for a donation, they were allowed to wear denim to work. And we received a thank you card that because of other cities doing this exact same thing, more than $6 million was raised for the Susan G. Coman Breast Cancer Foundation. The donations are used to fund breast cancer research, education, screening, and treatment programs. And I thank Mr. Eisen for allowing the city employees to take place and to take part in that event. Also, I've received a letter from the Alliance for Children. And they are sponsoring a blue ribbon campaign throughout Tarrant County, and it symbolizes support for the prevention of child abuse and promotes community awareness. And we have been a participant in this organization for quite a while. And I have the blue ribbons here that I'll pass out to council. It is, let me see if they tell me when, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I'll pass these out to council before we leave this evening. And I know we talked about this last year several times. And this year, it appears that the numbers are way ahead of last year. And we were talking about the animals a minute ago. Rabies is fast becoming a really big issue. There have already been more cases reported so far this year than all of last year put together. They're finding a tremendous amount of them coming out from the Keller area and in Keller. With all the construction that's going on, we're taking their homes away. So they're coming out and the pets that you let outside can get bit by these rabid skunks. And then if the pets bite you, you're really not going to like it because I hear those shots are not very pleasant. And I noticed the other night on the news that for a child, the shots run about $900. And for an adult, they're well over $1,000. So if the thought of shots don't bother you, that price might bother you a little bit. So just please be aware, those of you that let your animals roam around outside. Our next agenda item is agenda item number 24. And I do have two speakers cards. And what I'm going to do first is ask our city engineer to come out. He has agreed to address what has happened on this. There was a meeting today and bring everyone up to date. And then I will call the speakers forward. Greg, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. A quick recap of what happened is the development of Fossil Springs had an outlet structure that tied into the North Channel Bank of Big Fossil Creek west of Halton Road. In fact, I think it has three outlet structures. However, the middle one failed last summer. And with that failure, about 30 foot of creek erosion occurred. I met with the contractor and the developer out at the site. It was determined that the failure was due more to design than it was to workmanship and materials. So the contractor did not want to fix the project. However, the developer was responsible as he has an agreement with the city that he's responsible for all infrastructure within two years of city acceptance. The contractor hired an engineer to reevaluate the bank and to fix the failure. Contractor went, or the developer went ahead and hired a different contractor who went out, I want to say in October, and restored the bank. There was a rain event, it failed again. He got about two thirds to fixing the structure and the bank, and another rain event wiped that out. So at that time, we again met in the field with the developer, his engineer, and this new contractor to come up with a type of plan that we felt comfortable with. This was going to be a much larger project than obviously what we initially expected from what we saw over the summer. At this point, in the middle of November, it had grown from about a 30 to 50 foot problem to, I would guess, to about a 200 or 300 foot problem. At that time, we tentatively agreed upon what party would do what. We got together with our city attorneys to draft such an agreement. In that time period, from about the mid-December to date, it has not been weather that's conducive to this type of construction. The city, we have had our street contractors still repair our streets. We've had new streets reconstructed in that time. However, that type of construction, you can work on the days that the, that the surrounding areas dried out in the creek. While it may not rain for a couple of days, you still have high flows, you're still collecting runoff. So none of this work could be done from the time that we've come up with this new plan. And consequently, the erosion has grown now from 200 to 300 foot from, in November, to what I would guess somewhere around 800 foot to 1,000 foot as it sits today. This afternoon, I did meet again with our, with our, one of our city attorneys and the developers to come up with a plan that would also need to potentially involve the Corps of Engineers. At this point, it looks like there will have to be some city participation, perhaps financially at a minimum, it will have to be with some of our city crews in terms of getting the sandbar that's in the creek, out of the creek. The channel, as you see it, is my understanding, it's a complete man-made channel, that the creek at one time was almost where the high school is. And prior to the construction of the high school, they moved the creek into a nice, when it was originally constructed, my understanding, in the mid-'80s, to nice even side slopes. However, since that time, you've had growth in the creek, growth has attracted other growth, has attracted a collection of debris which attracts silt, and you have additional growth. So it's time, or it has been time, to get that debris out, to get the sandbar out with the trees, reshape the creek so that you take out the bend where the erosion is occurring. And once you get that sandbar out, it's our intention to have our city crews potentially work with the contractor in restoring the bank and the drainage structure. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Greg. You covered it pretty well. About the only thing you didn't mention was a possible timeframe involved to, from start to finish to get this deal done.
The Public Works Department is currently working or trying to get ahold of the Corps. It's been their experience in the past that on similar type situations, we have not needed what's called a 404 permit. We seem to think that we will not need a 404 permit in this case. If that is the case, I really think that you can start seeing construction maybe as early as the end of May, June. The reason I say that far out again is because it is creek work. And if we got equipment down there today, it wouldn't last. We couldn't get enough accomplished and we'd have to get out of the creek.
Okay. One other question there. I note that you went in and moved barriers. Someone from the city came in and moved the barriers away from the sidewalk area, which made it a little more passable for our citizens. They are having to walk a long way out of the way, but it's certainly much better as far as safety goes. You mentioned that this thing had grown from 200 feet to 800 to 1,000 feet in just this period of time since November. This has been abnormally wet. Texas summers are usually pretty dry. So once we get past the spring, are you thinking that once you get started on this in May and June, that it's, it's pretty much going to be a straight through process?
Exactly.
Aren't any, you know, any unforeseen torrential downpour?
Exactly. We'll have to divert the creek to get rid of the sandbar. Then once we do that, divert the creek back over to there to fix that bank. And that's exactly our intention, to get in, take two weeks to a month, and then to get out and have it finished. It seems plainly obvious at this point that restoring the bank is not going to be the answer. I mean, this is a much larger project than what was originally anticipated.
One other concern that I have, having been over there, is looking at the sidewalk. I've noted that it's washed out, you know, from under the sidewalk. Is there any plan to go in there and temporarily keep that sidewalk from decaying any further? You know, I'd hate to lose that sidewalk. Or are you just going to have to let it go like it is until such time as you can get down there and actually start to work?
We haven't given that a lot of consideration in terms of what we're going to do until construction. However, it is our, our goal not to move the sidewalk. By that, you know, we're going to have to replace sections of the sidewalk. But when we're done with this project, it's our intention to put the sidewalk back where you see it.
Back where it is right.
I.e., we're not trying to get it closer to the residence homes, to put it back in the location that you currently see it.
Very good.
Thank you, Greg. You might want to stay close by in case there's any further questions. Speaker's card from Wayne Iverson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Iverson, 30, 33 Halton Road. Greg pretty well has answered my question. I didn't hear about this until late today. I'm kind of going through the same thing with my daughter, which is just, she lives a little bit north of this area in Fort Worth. And the city's pretty well told us, tough luck. Tough luck, and the developer has pretty well walked on it, and they're fixing to lose their fence. So I was just a little concerned. The only thing I don't like, and Greg knows I don't like, we got to pay for some of this. Worked with him real hard, was straightaway, and I never liked us having to pay for what the state should have paid for. Who is, who was really responsible for this? I mean, I see that the city's coming in to help. Was the city involved with this in the beginning, or was this really the developer that really should have been taking care of this? And if that's the case, then why is the city going to have to spend time on it?
The developer's contention is a couple of things. And while it's not for me to argue, I'm not in a court of law, but I can tell you his contentions are: one, that due to the city's lack of maintenance, the sandbar developed, forced the water on to the north bank. That aided in the erosion. Number two, due to the rain events that we've had, have, normally we have spring rains and fall rains, our major rain events. However, we've had quite a few major rain events from mid-November on. So due to the circumstances, as he sees it, out of his control, that's aided into the erosion of the bank. Now, we can argue until we're blue in the face, or we can say, hey, look, get as much as we can from him. He is willing to hire a contractor, he's willing to put up a two-year maintenance bond on his work. And I guess the way I'm looking at it, and if the agreement needs to be changed, we'll be recommending to the city council is to make the best out of a bad situation. Ideally, this would have never happened. You know, ideally, all of our creeks would maintain and be in a pristine condition, but the fact is that that's just not feasible. So again, I'm just trying to make the best out of a bad situation. The developer's arguments, whether they have merit or not, I don't know, might be a better question for an attorney, but again, I don't want to get into a litigious atmosphere when we're trying to really correct this situation and help the property owners.
Does that answer your question, sir? Okay. Thank you, Greg. We'll move on to, oh, first of all, let me, Mr. Moore, are you, you have Agenda Item Number 24, but you say no parking signs. That's Agenda Item Number 25. Which one did you want to speak on?
Number 25 is just for passing a gate for gray on the highway.
No, sir. 25 is parking signs on Fincher Road.
Oh, mine.
Oh. Oh. Well, I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened. But you do want to speak on the parking signs?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Then we will move on to that next agenda item, which is the parking signs on Fincher Road. This was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Avery, so I will let him speak to this first, and then I will call on you.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I put this on the agenda is because we have a situation down here where, within the last couple of years, there's been a significant, significant increase in the number of cars parked in the street, and also of small children in the area. My concern is that with Fincher being a collective, a collector's street, and also with it being more narrow in that particular portion between Belknap and 28th Street, I'm afraid that some of the small children may wander out in between the cars and possibly become injured. It's very difficult now, currently, with the cars parked along the curbs, to navigate through that area. We had discussed in the, in the pre-council, other alternatives other than placing no parking signs in the area, and what I'd like to do primarily is just open it up for discussion for the council on other possible alternatives rather than placing the no parking signs or possibly putting no parking signs, whichever it's a council discretion.
I thought that in pre-council, the council had said something about sending out letters to the residents. Did we say that?
That's what I was thinking we were going to do. I didn't know if the council wanted to further discuss this item, or this, or...
If we're going to send out letters, there's probably no need in carrying on a big discussion.
Okay.
Let me ask this gentleman to come forward, and let's hear from him. Mr. Moore, will you come forward, please? State your name and address, please, for the record.
I am James A. Moore. I live at 2300 Fincher Road, lived there 22 years. And I'm glad you brought up the letter issue thing some time ago, and I don't remember when, I should have brought it with me. I've got it. I did receive a letter, as well as my neighbors, concerning no parking signs. At that time, the letter stated, you know, to call and voice our opinions, yea or nay, you know, whether we wanted the signs or not. Well, my wife and I and other people, I don't know how many, you know, voiced our opinions over the telephone. And now it comes up again that you're really considering this, and I just, I'm against it. And I'd like to ask, can you all answer questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has there been complaints from the fire department, police department, ambulances about, you know, going up and down our street?
I don't believe we've had any complaints from public service, have we? Public safety, no?
Okay, and there are a lot of children, and especially in the middle of the block where I live, there are a lot of children. But, you know, I've never seen any children in the street. And what my fear is, if you open it up, whether it's one side of the street or both sides of the street, no parking, when I back out of my driveway, I look, if there's a car down the street at the light, you know, I wait, because they're, you know, coming on down the road. And if you open it up, they're going to get faster. Even though the speed limit might be 30 or 35 miles an hour, or whatever it is, they're going to get faster, you know, with no cars on either side of the street. And like, I've been there 22 years, and I haven't, I haven't noticed any more traffic than usual, and I've never seen any problem with a fire truck or anybody getting down the street. In fact, today, there was an ambulance going down the street in a pretty good clip, and he didn't have any problem.
So you think if there are no parking signs, that people coming down that street are just going to go faster?
Oh, yes, definitely. They go fast now. We call that the test, the test street for the used cars. We see them all the time coming down there, hitting their brakes and stuff, you know. I know they're used cars, because they've got signs on the windows and stuff. So it could be a real big problem.
Well, I think you'll be, if the council does go forward with this, I think you will be receiving a letter, and you might tell your neighbors. A lot of times, people get these letters, and they won't reply, so it would be good if we could hear from as many of you as possible.
Yeah.
So we would know just what you think about it.
And, you know, holidays and weekends and stuff, you know, we've got to have places for our guests to park. And we don't have as many big get-togethers as we used to, but I know our neighbors do. And hey, you know, that's what family's all about, visiting and being together.
Well, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember Hanserling?
I guess, bottom line, I'm going to agree with what Mr. Morris had to say. I went down and talked to somebody today, and first of all, they didn't know anything about it, and secondly, they weren't really for it. I just think there's a lot of downside to doing this. We don't have it anywhere else in our city in residential streets that aren't either close to a rec center or a school zone, that sort of thing. So I think it's going to set a pretty bad precedent throughout our community, because everybody's going to want to come in. And who chooses what side, the whole process. Well, I'm for just not doing it at all, or not soliciting the people to see if they want to do it. Speed humps are an option, Mr. Moore. You can do a survey, and if there's 75% or 80% in agreement...
If you do the, the government, sounds like it's true, yes?
Yeah, okay. That's just my two cents on this.
Did you want to make a motion to that effect?
Well, I just make a motion that we discontinue this agenda item, I would say.
To continue it?
To discontinue it, just to not take action on it whatsoever.
Councilmember Williams?
I got a question.
Do I? Okay, go ahead.
I've got a question concerning the speed humps. I guess the public safety, is that considered a main thoroughfare that we use for the fire safety and stuff that...
In that particular section, I believe it is not. This is between...
28th Street.
My understanding, it is not on that list of streets that are primary response routes for public safety. So it would be eligible if the persons from that community were to petition for them and go through that procedure that's been established by the council.
Councilmember Avery?
I was going to make a motion.
There's a motion.
Okay.
You want to second it?
No, I don't want to. I was going to make another one.
Okay. Actually, there's not really a motion on the floor, is there?
Well, the motion was to...
I mean, you just want to drop this.
And that's the motion.
That's the motion to drop this. And do I have a second to Councilmember Hanserling's motion?
Make a motion to deny this or drop it?
Drop it.
Actually, it would be denied, because the actual thing here is to place no parking signs. So it would be motion would be made to not place no parking signs on Fincher.
Okay. I have no second to that motion. So motion will die for lack of a second. Councilmember Avery?
Okay. I make a motion, we place no parking signs on Fincher between 28th and Belknap from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., including weekends.
No parking from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m.?
Nights, including weekends. Including weekends.
Including weekends.
Do I have a second to this motion?
On both sides.
From 7...
7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., basically nights.
Are you, are you seconding?
No, ma'am, I've got clarity.
Okay. Do I have a second to this motion? Then this motion also dies for lack of a second.
Well, Johnny, you needed a clarification for what?
Councilmember Williams?
Well, my clarification was, if we're wanting to put it to, to make it safe for the children from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., there's not going to be many children out there.
During the summer, I believe so.
Couple of hours worth would be about it.
And weekends.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Avery, would you be willing to entertain the idea that we had in the pre-council about giving the citizens the benefit of the doubt and send them a letter or hand it a little by code enforcement and let them maybe voluntarily comply and not using the street to park, instead use the driveways as much as possible?
Well, would we give them a time limit on that, 30 days to come in compliance before we brought this, revisited this issue, or how would we do that?
I would support that, but I feel that, while we agree on pre-council, that to try to give the citizens the benefit of the doubt by letting them know that it is in the best sense to them to comply and voluntarily to not to park too much on the street at a certain hours.
Okay. If you would put that in form of a motion, I'll second that.
There will be a motion, formal motion.
And I'll second.
Madam Secretary, did you get that motion? Would you please restate it? Because I didn't either.
Yes, I asked Councilman Avery if he would entertain, accept and amend the motion that he first made.
Well, just if you would, just state it from the beginning to the end, please.
I would make a motion that we send a letter or deliver it by the code enforcement to every resident in between 28th and Belknap and ask them to voluntarily, between the hours of 7 and...
7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., and then including weekends.
7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., that they voluntarily use their driveways as much as possible instead of the streets.
Are you including weekends in your motion?
I'll be willing to include that also, weekends, because the last Sunday that I went by there to look at it, it was a lot of, lot of cars parked on the, and the street was really congested with traffic, with cars parked on the side. Holidays and every day.
Did you, did you get that motion?
On the weekends, are you proposing that that be from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. at nights, or all day?
At night, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m.
7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. in the morning.
7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. in the morning, weekdays and weekends, seven days a week. Okay? All right. Do I have a second to that motion? Councilmember Avery?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, gentlemen. Please register your vote. Motion passes with Councilmember Hanserling voting no. The next agenda item, Agenda Item Number 26, regards debris on Denton Highway. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I stated in pre-council, I would like to recuse myself from this issue since I do business with the Hall of Fame Trust.
And I will ask Mayor Protam Williams to come forward and take over this agenda item, as I also rent space from the Hall of Fame Trust.
The reason I place this item on the agenda is we've had a sudden increase of complaints concerning the Hall of Fame Estates at the corner of Denton Highway and Stanley Keller. On the mayor's hotline, we've received many calls referring to this as a swamp. It's come to my attention that this item has been associated as contact city hall demanding action toward the owner. Only a couple of persons have a dozen or so calls that left their name and number. In order for the council or staff to answer your questions, we must have a name, a phone number to reply to your complaints. This is just not a problem that has occurred overnight, nor in the terms of anyone on this panel. This has been going for many years. We have many areas in the area that are in need of attention, but this one is either the most visible or the most controversial. We have addressed this problem about a year ago, and some citizens were complaining that we were going to use private tax dollars to repair his property. Since we've had many calls complaining of this problem, we have directed staff to contact Tex Dot, and they have contacted Zach Sessions, a Tex Dot. In my opinion, there are many trees that have been growing in the right-of-way for years. Also, Tex Dot has failed to maintain drainage ditch in front of the property. Mr. Slovac may want to report a little bit on the condition of the area, his conversation with Tex Dot, and bring this forward in a moment. I've also spoken with the property owner concerning this matter. He has brought to my attention that the city and state are lacking water to drain on his property. I surveyed the property just as early as, or just as recent as last Saturday, and found when it rains, the water flows into the owner's natural pond located near the highway. In my opinion, water from the state highway and local streets and shopping centers drain on this property. As a liaison to the beautification board, I would like to make you aware that we have adopted Denton Highway from Broadway to Browning Drive as our adopted spot. Once a month, we, along with the help of our board members and trustees from our jail, pick up trash along that roadway. We are very well aware of the problem. The owner of the property has informed me if we can alleviate the problem of the runoff water, which also contains trash and debris, he will make an effort to clean up his portion of the problem. This makes better sense than a court battle. After all, we are all neighbors. I have been informed that there's a man that's telling people in the area that he is willing to put a, clean the property up and put a fountain in the middle of the pond. I spoke with the owner of the property, and he's not aware of anyone having a contract or anything to do with this. The only one that he says he spoke with on the matter is the city administrator, Mr. Slovac, and myself. As far as a complaint about mosquitoes breeding in the pond, we must have our own public works director to draft this item. We have many bodies of waters and creeks and streams flowing through our city, and this has always been a problem and probably always will. I would like to ask for your patience on this matter and promise we're doing everything in our power to correct this problem. No person on this panel, not even the mayor, has the power to do anything in their self about this. This must be a team effort. Thank you, Dan. I'll ask Mr. Slovac if he has anything for Tex Dot on that, concerning that, maybe bring us up to date, and maybe give us a guideline on what we're looking at, please.
Mayor and Council, pardon me. Last week, I visited with Zach Sessions, who is the right-of-way supervisor for Tex Dot. We took a look at the right-of-way adjacent to the pond, and particularly the large trees that are growing out over the highway and the right-of-way. There was a lot of debris also on the right-of-way and in the edge of the pond area adjacent to the highway. The highway department, Zach Sessions, has agreed, if he can get clearance from his environmental people, they have rules and regulations that any time that there is vegetation or something that they would have to disturb adjacent to ponding water, that they have to have that they would have to disturb adjacent to ponding water, that they have to have clearance from their environmental division, and he thought, in his opinion, with what he saw there, that he would probably be able to get that. And if he would get the clearance, he would use, using highway department crews and equipment, they would go back to the, basically, property line, if they can determine exactly where that was. Basically, those trees are kind of growing out of the fence row along the pond there, and with the environmental clearance, that they would, in fact, cut those trees completely down, you know, to the stump level there, to the fence, and haul those off, particularly getting the big trees out of the highway right-of-way. There was an incident up there here a while back, where a large truck struck a limb off one of those trees there, and threw it into the car behind her and broke the windshield out. So, particular interest that we, and the highway department particularly, take care of a potential safety hazard situation along there, and they have agreed to do that with the clearance of their environmental people. He said that it'll probably take about 30 days before he gets word back from their environmental people. In relation to the trash along there, we got some prison jail trustees out of our municipal jail that day, I think we had six of them up there, and we picked up all of the trash along the right-of-way of the highway there, and I did contact Mr. Hallton for the fact that right inside the fence line, actually on his property adjacent to the water, there was a large amount of bottles and debris and trash and stuff that, in the event that there's a water rise again, all that's going to end up into our drainage system on the outfall side of Cedar Crest, and once that is clogged up again, then we have a potential for the water overflowing Cedar Crest, and doing some damage on the downside of the roadway. The drainage system was open, I did go in and check with that, there was a large pile of debris over in that corner, and I asked Mr. Hallton that to let me take the prisoners in there to pick that up, for the simple fact it was going to potentially clog up our drainage system again. He said that if we would go ahead and pick that stuff up, or have the prisoners pick that up along the highway side, he himself would take his people and pick up that inside that corner, so that was fine. Periodically, we do have to go in with our city equipment into the face of the pond or the outfall, which is inside the dam, kind of towards the east side of it. That is the outfall of the pond water that runs into our system, and periodically, we don't have to do that very often, maybe about once a year, we go in there with some equipment and open that up, so that there is a clear drainage through there. But, we picked up probably about a, oh, a pickup load of bagged up debris and stuff from the right-of-way there, particularly right inside the fence area there, but I felt very comfortable doing it. It was imperative that we not let that stuff get into that drainage system on the Cedar Crest side over there, and we keep periodic watch on that after big rains, to make sure that that drainage system remains open.
Do you feel like the debris that's in this area, do you feel like that is coming from the highway, or is that coming from the estates, or where do you feel like the trash and debris is coming from?
Trash and debris is coming both off the highway and by the pipelines that's coming into the pond. All the water comes in from that whole drainage shed, runs above the shopping center up into the neighborhood there, and all that water ends up in the Hallton Pond. Likewise, the surface water that comes off the highway runs into the pond. The highway department told me after we get the trees and everything cleaned up and cut up out of there, they will take a look at the drainage situation, but it was Mr. Sessions, in my opinion, just looking at it there, that the outfall area there into the pond, it looks like just the natural grade of that is going to take most of the surface water and put it right in that pond there.
Right. And that, the grade on that drain coming from, I guess it'd be down oops north, come back down toward, by the new house there, and through the area, that's not graded properly, as comparing with the rest of the grade along Denton Highway?
It's probably, it's probably could stand a little bit clean right there, but the ultimate where it's going to end up is in the pond.
Right.
Yeah. But again, they would take a look at the drains, there didn't appear to be a lot they could do as far as grading there, but they would certainly look at it once they got everything cleared out of there.
Do you feel that the owner of this, Mr. Hallton, do you feel like he's responsible for any of the trash that's been going into there, or is that?
Well, I don't want to be put on the spot, again, it's my opinion that most of the trash is coming off the roadways, and the shopping center area that's, you know, either being transferred there by the water or by the wind put in there. I don't know if there's that much debris coming in from the Hallton Estate itself. Certainly, all the water does come in there, but there's a lot of debris that's visible in there, that's just down trees that are in the pond themselves, and the pond's been dry or very low for the last couple of years, and certainly, there's been some activity, some beavers in there, I saw where some of the trees have been cut down, and that debris is floating around in there. And the only way you're going to get rid of that is to, you know, go in there and get it out of there. And I guess the situation with the drainage, the council authorized the staff here a while back to take a look, or get the engineering firm to take a look at the drainage situation there, and give us an estimate of a study up there, and they did do that. If we went in there, and of course, it would cost a lot of money, and we did an drainage improvement, brought the pipeline, say, down the highway right-of-way, and tied it into the existing system, well, that would certainly eliminate part of the water from going off of the neighborhood in there, but as long as you have that pond situation up there in wet years like this, it's going to be full of water, irregardless of whether you have a pipeline outfalling into it, because of the natural surface drainage of the highway that's going to go in there to it. So, as far as eliminating the water, I don't, I don't know if you'll ever be able to do that, as long as that pond is there.
The conversation I had with Mr. Hallton was, if we would, if we could alleviate the drainage problem, that he would possibly fill in the pond area and build a fence along there, and make it a lot nicer looking, and that's, I want the citizens to basically know that we're not turning our head to that. A lot of times, people are turning to complain, and it's not taken care of immediately, but there's, you know, loops that we have to go through, and I just wanted to let them be aware of that. And I see that Councilmember Hanserling has a question?
I do, and it's for you, Mr. Slovac. Regarding the, you're talking about the solution is an expensive solution, we don't even know how much, but we're talking six figures, probably, easy?
It's going to be up, expensive, yes.
Okay. Is it, and this is a very simplistic look at it, is, we can't simply modify the outfall, which we already kind of maintain in a way anyway, which the outfall is where it comes out of the pond, and goes down into, and underneath Cedar Crest, and goes back to the south.
That's correct.
And do we need special, is that where the drainage easement, or we need to-
We have, that belongs to ours. Basically, there's no easement in between where the pipeline outfalls out of the highway into the pond. And in the past, as I understand, Mr. Hallton has been reluctant to dedicate an easement across that part of his property to just basically tie those two pipelines together.
Okay.
Because it would, you know, traverse across that pond, and if it was ever filled in, filled in, or what have you, there would be that easement across that corner.
Sure. The other question is, Tex, so TexDOT's going to go in, and they're going to take care of the trees that are definitely in the right-of-way, and they're going to trim back those trees that are even on-
Just to, no.
No.
Just to the right-of-way.
Just to the right-of-way.
If we can determine where that's at, there's an old fence line there, and short of having it surveyed there, and they may have some records where they can get some measurements off of the pavement, and they're going to look at that, but basically, just taking a look at it, it looks, there may be one or two trees that have kind of grown up under the fence into the right-of-way, if in fact, that fence is the right-of-way, and that's what I, that's what we're assuming.
Yeah, it's guessing.
And those big trees are growing out from that point.
Sure. So, what do we do in situations, maybe not in this particular case, but anywhere else in the city, our ordinance say about having dead trees and debris of that nature, and because what it's going to do, we're going to trim up, and I can kind of visualize it now, you're, TexDOT's going to come in, and they're going to trim everything along a plane, along that fence line, if that is truly the right-of-way, and you're going to have stumps, and then, you know, some that are leaning now, as they die more, they're going to lean more. TexDOT's going to come back, we're going to have prisoners go back and clean up, and this isn't a permanent solution, this is a-
No, I certainly didn't say it was a permanent, no, no, it's, I don't have a permanent solution to you. As I mentioned earlier, you can, you can do a high-dollar drainage situation there, and basically bring the pipeline out of the Hallton property, probably down the, either down in the highway or in the highway right-of-way, but again, as long as that pond is there, in wet weather like this, you're going to have that, and most of those are willow trees that are growing in there. We cut the stumps off there, or the highway department's going to cut the stumps off, those will probably, the live ones are going to come back out. I mean, a willow tree continues to grow in there. About the only way that I'm aware of, that you can do anything with a pond like that, is you have to basically drain the thing, let it dry out, and then get some heavy equipment over there, and make a nice, you know, sloped pond around it with grass stuff, and that unfortunately ends up being a continuous type of maintenance situation.
Sure. You've mentioned before about a large part of the problem would be the floating trees and the debris that's in there, and-
That's what's visible from the roadway now.
That dead brush and that trees, that's a part of the problem. I mean, and isn't that typically the owner's responsibility to make sure that that, any dead brush or limbs are taken care of?
Out in the middle of private property.
Okay.
Do we have an ordinance to cover that?
I don't know if that would be covered in the, as far as in a pooling situation like that, I don't know.
The question, it raises a question, Mayor Protem Williams, do we have an ordinance that deals with litter and debris on private property?
We have a litter ordinance, yes. Junk trash and debris.
And the-
Mr. Hallton's contention is, is I didn't put that trash there, it's not my responsibility to pick it up, the city and the state put it there.
Okay, I can certainly see his point, but we have a lot of businesses in town, and I know a couple right there at Starlot and Denton Highway, that continually get complaints from citizens about, you know, bottles and cigarette butts and debris, but it's those property owners' responsibility, business owners' responsibility to maintain that property, and that's where, once their property starts, that's what they're responsible for, so.
The main item of this agenda item was to say the wheels are rolling, and this is better than doing nothing at all?
That, basically, I just, you know, I felt comfortable about taking the jail trustees out there and picking that trash up, for the simple fact it was going to end up in our drainage system over there, there's a reason I took the initiative to do that. The state highway department has got a potential traffic situation with those, a safety situation with those big trees, so they're certainly going to take the initiative to eliminate that part of it. Again, it's not a permanent solution to the situation up there, and I don't have a firm response to you on that. I wish I did, but I don't.
Originally, when the, when that was developed, I remember all the way back when it was a two-lane highway with no shoulder, had rocks on the side of it, and we'd ride our bicycles up there and swim in it, it was a nice pond then. That's before all the roads were built, and all the drainage went into it. When they developed that, you know why it wasn't designed any better to take that water around his property, other than take it through his property?
I think it was basically the natural flow there, right there, and at that time, there was very little given to drainage situation improvement. We had a lot of surface drainage situations throughout the town, and I think they just left it as that, it was going there naturally.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. You had mentioned that earlier, we had attempted to get right-of-way granted to us, and Mr. Hallton had decided that he did not want that to happen at that time. Were we to attain this right-of-way?
I guess what I'm saying is, if you put, if you correct the drainage system, the underground drainage system as we know it, you're still going to have a pond of water there in wet weather like this, as long as that pond is there.
That's what I was getting to, and even if we do have theoretically attained this right-of-way, that's not going to address the problem as far as trash and debris from the state highway, getting over into that area, that's not going to stop that a bit.
Well, if there's debris on the roadway, and there comes a big rain there, it's going to wash it into that pond.
So, regardless of whether we had right-of-way, then you'd still have that portion of the problem?
We have that potential there, yes.
Okay. That's the only question I had, thank you.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, I got my questions to you. Did I just tell you right that you said that if the city takes care of the drainage, that Mr. Hallton is prepared to cover that pond?
He would consider filling the pond in and building a fence along there, which would take care of the junk trash and debris, it wouldn't be able to get onto his property.
I think it'd be to the benefit of the citizens and everybody concerned, that in the future, that we can pursue this a little further, because as long as that pond is there, there are problems that will always be there, force, trash, and debris. As far as TexDOT, what they're prepared to do to this, at this point, it's just going to help you like a band-aid, but the problem will still be there. And I think if Mr. Hallton can consider covering up that pond, I think we need to pursue that in the future.
I think Mr. Slovac is going to pursue this, and probably get back with the council as soon as he gets some sort of solution from TexDOT, and let us know what they're going to do.
They, if they get clearance from their environment, they are going to cut those trees down, and haul them off.
Good. Councilmember Jennings?
I just have one other comment to make. I would, I would certainly be against spending citizens' funds on private property, and I have been in the past. I would not, however, be against attempting to get some type of a grant from the state of Texas, who in reality is responsible for the drainage that's coming off their state highway over there. I certainly would also be receptive to taking any, any help that they might give, to cleaning up the ditch, cutting the trees, or whatever, but I would have to stop short of spending Hallton city funds there, and I would certainly be willing to help Mr. Hallton in any way I could physically, as far as manual labor, myself, and I'm sure there's a lot of people on the beautification board, some other places, that would be happy to get out there and do whatever they could, but I just don't think that we can, we can actually go out and spend city funds. But, I would also like to look into the possibility of seeing if there's some type of grant money from the state, that we can apply to situations such as this. I mean, this is a unique deal, maybe there's some relief that we can get out there from them, and use those funds. I'd like to have someone from staff contact the state of Texas, and let them know what we're up against, and let them know what we're trying to do here, and see if there might be some monetary relief there that we might be able to take advantage of.
That's why I was, I wasn't wanting to spend any of the city's money toward that, I was wanting, that's the reason I directed staff to go toward the state, and see what we could get there. It's, I'm not going to admit that it's our problem, the state's problem, or Mr. Hallton's problem, but it is a problem that needs to be addressed, and it's, you know, it's a very high visible spot, a lot of people see it, and when they come through Hallton City, somebody says that's the Hallton Estates. I would like to get it in some form, if we go by there, that they probably wouldn't even notice it other than saying that's a nice place, instead of calling the mayor's hotline, or something down on it, and that's what we're doing.
I did not intend in any way to make it sound like that you wanted to spend city funds. If it came across that way, I'm sorry, but I know that was not your intention.
No, no, I, I understand what you meant, I just wanted to reinject that.
The only time that we would use anything with the city is at what we've done in the past, and that was with Mr. Hallton's permission, that we take our equipment on there to, oh, keep that drainage system opened up, and of course, utilizing the jail trustees to pick up the trash and stuff along there. Of course, we did have one of our supervisory people outside on the roadway directing that clean, but basically, that's, we have not spent any funds, and do not intend to.
I don't see anything at all wrong with what you did there, I think that's just good management, and taking, you know, making use of what we have, and seeing a problem and trying to alleviate that problem, I don't have a problem at all with that.
Okay.
I appreciate the work that you and Mr. Eisen and staff are doing on that. Thank you.
I've been asked to make a correction, I was in error when I said that I rented from the Hallton Estate, I don't, but a corporation does, that I'm not even on the board of directors, however, I'm very well acquainted with someone who is, so, just so there's no, no means of impropriety there, that's one of my favorite new words. We'll move on to agenda item number 27, resignation of board members, and we have a resignation, Mr. Tom Hall, alternate on P and Z, if I may see your vote to ratify. Thank you, council. Passes. And we also have a resignation from John Finn, from the ZBA, if I could see your vote, please, to accept. Thank you, it passes. And, let's see, our next agenda item? I'm sorry? Mr. White? I don't have it. I don't have another resignation.
This one?
Good one.
We have a resignation from Mr. White from the beautification board, if I can see your vote, please, to accept. It passes, thank you.
There's one more.
Okay, I have another one. This is a night for resigning. Resignation from Mr. Art Geismann from the ZBA.
He's an alternate.
And he is an alternate, yes. Could I see your vote, please? It passes, thank you. All resignations have been accepted by council. And agenda item number 28, do we have any appointments? Councilmember Hurley?
I'd like to appoint Debbie Giltmeyer, 5712, Starlight Drive, to the beautification board. Also, I would like to appoint?
Wait, let's just do one at a time, sir.
Okay.
For Ms. Giltmeyer, ratification passes. Okay?
Also, I'd like to appoint J.B. White, who was formerly on the beautification board, to the zoning board of adjustment as place six alternate.
See your vote, please, to ratify. Ratification passes. Thank you. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move for council ratification, Dr. Jimmy Gill to the place seven zoning board of adjustment in an alternate position.
Dr. Jimmy Gill to ZBA, did you say, alternate?
Yes.
Could I see your vote, please, to ratify? Ratification passes. Councilmember Everett?
Yes, to the zoning board of adjustments, I would like to submit the appointment of Val Whitfield, who is currently an alternate from the ZBA, to a permanent voting member.
To place five?
To place five, yes.
To place five, okay.
Because Finn was my, he resigned.
All right, so you're replacing?
John Finn.
John Finn.
Yes.
Could I see your vote, please, to ratify? Ratification passes. Councilmember Henshawling?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Debbie Giltmeyer to the bond study committee.
Well, that's, I think that's the next agenda item.
Oh.
Wait, no, you might be right, just a minute.
Board?
Yes, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
It's okay. Are there any more board or commission appointments or reappointments? Then let me state one. I have for the ZBA alternate, Mr. Raymond Soloski, and I will give his address and phone number to the city secretary. Ratification passes, thank you, Jimmy. Now we'll move on to appointment of bond study committee, and we also have planning and zoning met after our last council meeting, and they chose Mr. Eddie Edwards to represent their board on the bond study committee. Councilmember Hurley?
I'd like to appoint David Hunt from the ZBA board, board, zoning board of adjustment to the bond study committee to represent the ZBA.
All right. And, say, councilmember Henshawling, you had one as well?
Yes, Ms. Debbie Giltmeyer.
Debbie Giltmeyer to the bond study committee. Let's ratify both of those at once, gentlemen, and ratification does pass. Are there any further? We have no excused absences tonight, so we'll move on to executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. Council will now recess to executive session, section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 at 9:49 p.m.